So actually, we've only got six people in the room. For the rule of six?
Oh, no. It doesn't apply to work.
No, I know it doesn't, but this is so, it is quite good. Now, turn the sound, volume down. Have you, you're still, can you hear?
Have you seen that? Can you hear anything? Unless it's out, hello, all I have, no sound.
Hello, no sound. I knew it.
Have you got sound now, Pete, because? There's actually nothing by Keith on the right hand side. There isn't any sound by his, so that must be something from his end, I think.
Well, it might be, no, you know, it's not going to make sound, is it?
No. That means that the sound is off.
No.
But the, so the other one is the light, the grey one, by Keith. Oh, there is now. Can you hear us now, please?
No. Here's John. Don't worry. So that's, it's like, and we've got, we've got what else?
Oh, sweet, wasn't it?
What have I now?
Ah, now I lost. We still did have.
Oh.
Andy, Wendy, that's it.
Yeah.
Is it Wendy?
Wendy.
Wendy.
Yeah. I thought Wendy.
Yeah. I forget his name, keep calling him Mark. Quite a weird name.
I think Mark was the security manager there, I think.
He was, Sharon, he was.
I don't know.
You on the car, not stuff?
Hello, everyone. Hello, Frankie.
Hello, guys. Hello, can you see your line?
I can see it there, yeah. Can you hear me? Is he? Thank you. Okay, alright, thanks. I can't see you, but I can hear you. Okay, thanks.
So finally, we will start the, um, the, the Braggie's, the ten council full council meeting on Wednesday, the sixteenth of September.
Can I find it for you?
We'll give you it last week.
I'll shout.
So emergency evacuations proceedings, we all know what those are in here. And there's your view at home, you know which doors to run through. Um, so firstly, oh, they will be filming, I guess, by Fab. Are we recording?
Yes, I'm trying again, yeah, it should work this time.
Well done, Fab. Are we recording yet now? No, we're not recording yet. Um, submissions from the public. Do we have any members of the public?
None, no.
No, so no submissions from the public. Um, received any apologies for absence? We have, well, I know Elaine apparently sent a message through to say that she wants to be, do I?
Uh, apologies from Ed Rose and the representative from Baby Bowing. And I think that is that the Rachel's I have just joined might actually be Rachel.
And I know John, John is intending to join through Zoom.
He's there.
He's here, mate. Oh, he's here, is it? Oh, sorry, I didn't see.
Yeah, he's there, definitely there. Um, so was that Rachel as in?
I think it might be.
The Rachel.
Hello.
Okay. I stay here for me when I hear you. I'm on Rachel.
Hello. I didn't think anyone could make that over there, actually.
He just spoke about that.
We can't see. We're right there, we can hear you.
Yeah, you can move on.
I was so freaking seen, so there we go.
Okay, um, so we'll move on. Item number four, any declarations by members under the local government?
Dispensation.
Okay, my application's for any district, you're correct. Any dispensations by councillors? No. Okay, so any declaration by members under the local government act seventy-two? No. An exemption from the chair. The only thing which I've done since the last meeting was very happily opened the happy stone drill which is at the Woodbury Book Centre. And I've got to thank the, uh, both friends of both of them school for organising the kids to do it. And I also have a great thanks to the Woodbury Book Centre and the manager, Andy, for being able to, um, mount it and pay for it at the Woodbury Book Centre, which is just, if you, if you were outside, well, by the bus stop on, uh, the main road and you're at the giant end shop, the bicycle shop, which is just inside the car park in a grass area. And that would all go down in history. And we hope that the kids will, when they got round here to say, that's my stone. But it's a great thanks for, um, all involved in that. And I just don't get on Saturdays and the fish boat. So we'll move on, um, to confirm amendments, item number six of the meeting, our voluntary amendment.
There is one correction to be made, please. So it is on, um, item eleven point one.
Yeah, those.
Yeah, those are where it gets, so it's the very first, the top bit. July pensions reads five, four, eight, zero, point one, one. And it should be five, five, nine, seven, point one, nine, which then changes the total from three to seventy-five, point nine, one to three to eight, four, two, point five, nine.
Is that amendment?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna comment. Uh, after number six, the council are going to join the meeting at this point. That's a little brusque, isn't it? It was due to technical difficulties and not, not because I was laughing. Can you put technical difficulties after that?
I can, I can, I can.
So I had a bad word come in places.
So those two amendments, are we happy to approve or not? Those in favour about the show hands?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Am I in favour? So that's unanimous, thank you. Right, sorry, do we have a proposal in second for that?
I have a proposal.
Thank you, Tom.
Oh, it's free today. It was fine today.
And what you put out here also happened. We need amendments and then write, so.
This is the third, the fourth amendment. Yes.
It was quite true.
Oh, is it? She's pushing pretty easy, she said. Yeah.
Like I say, you can first, or just initial, please.
Initially have a page and sign the date, the last page. Just need to talk. Okay, thank you very much.
So we will go to the, to the, to the, to the meeting, not elsewhere on the agenda. We've got seven point one, the ten meetings, that's an ambition.
Yeah, that's just, Ray's chasing up the quotes, the works. I think we'll be coming back with quotes, Tom.
We will be, that's what we've been doing.
Um, I think that's ten thousand budget and that's for the getting out of the internal bits in containment, so.
Of which he's given some.
Not sure on that one. The funding he's going for is for the leisure equipment and the multi-scan area, the skate park container. That's been, that one's been marked for quite a while.
Um, okay, recommendations from two thousand nineteen, Understate Ten Council Strategic Planning Meeting, seven point two, one. Various core activities centre to replace the damaged glass, ground, earth, air, last special, that, and food, pay.
You have those in your agenda pack, so keep that.
And on that? Oh, yes, sorry. Um, I was sort of waiting, it's a bit quiet at this end, so apologies. Um, seven point two, one, um, I put in the report, the outdoor space has been an asset for the preschool children who return to the fight back in June. The play scene children over the summer holidays were also able to enjoy the indoor space. There was remedial tree work that was carried out within the play area over the last few months following split trees and site part blockage. Quotations will be sought for the next meeting to artificially grasp this area as we start to get into the winter months.
Um, seven point two, two. Various core activities centre fair, you come and install, use fair to, this is different.
Okay, do you want me to read the report out? Has anybody read the report?
Yeah, re-reading.
Yeah, that was necessary to read the whole thing.
Okay, well, the purpose of the report is to possess accounts for, um, the process of inviting play designers to submit quotations by the government website, contact finder UK. Due to the amount of money needed, this has to go through this process because it is the amount of money needed to spend on the project. Um, in February, play areas were invited to visit the area and look at the sites and into ways of improving this replacement equipment. The specification back then was very vague, um, which reflected in the value of the quotes that had come back in. And as a council over the last few meetings, we've made it noticeably clear that accessibility and inclusive pieces of the play equipment would be needed to be included within the project. Players designs were received and delivered back to you in March. However, due to Covid, the council decided to halt any new projects until the end of June against that, as mentioned from the highest, so that the project is doable against the five year plan. The following was agreed at June finance committee meeting that the play area reserve, MC three, zero, one, six, was increased from one hundred and nine thousand, um, K, sorry, to one hundred and sixty thousand for two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one to allow twenty-five thousand pounds to be spent on the daily support pay area. And then this reserve is to be refreshed over the remainder of the four years. Quotes have been obtained which range from seventy-five to ninety thousand, but none of these quotes would include any accessible pieces. And by increasing the budget for this project to about a hundred and five K would be, in the long run, a best spend. At full council in July, it was agreed unanimously that this project should be completed within the two, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one financial year. A suggested figure of up to one hundred and five spent on this project could be allowed, or allocated, sorry. In March, contact was made with various funding providers and at this point, the town council was not eligible for any support. However, since lockdown, while revisiting some contacts, we discovered the town council might meet the criteria for up to fifty thousand pounds towards this project. Um, the various, uh, criteria to meet is complete the project within six months. The trust requires ten percent independent third party funding, e.g., for a grant of twenty K, it's required for the third party to be willing to contribute two thousand pounds to the company to reimburse it as tax credit. Okay, um, the completed application form, supporting documents must be submitted to them by the eleventh of December this year for their meeting in January for a decision. The next stage of the process would be compiling the specification and the post-work to submit to the government contract finder website and designs that come in as a result can be presented to the council. Areas for council to reduce costs will be safety surface area colours. Brightly coloured surfaces could increase the overall cost by up to four thousand pounds on this development. The council can specify the safety areas to be black, however, sometimes colour increases play value and can be seen as abusive. Galvanised dits over powder coated is more robust surface. Over time, powder coated pots, that exposing bare metal and the risk of rust and scratch surfaces has increased and you can't actually restore these surfaces. Accessibility and inclusive equipment pieces, uh, uh, sorry. These pieces of equipment are extremely, play equipment has been burnt to great deal over the last twenty-six years and inclusive pieces will reach out and be through the larger, more diverse groups by encouraging healthy play and social interaction. And on the actual report, I've listed what's currently within the play area and have put a suggested replacement play area with items to be included, which is some of the things that you've mentioned over the last meeting to include, um, a possible wheelchair platform swing and a wheelchair accessible roundabout. Um, and there are a couple of little pictures there and diagrams of the equipment that we've had quoted on, of the, without inclusive pieces. And I have put an offer of recommendation to agree to the budget of, oh, I put the things, one hundred and five K to draft up contract tender documentation with, with the listed equipment to meet the criteria of this funding provider.
We've already had seventy-five in the budget anyway. And, um, well, so we need to reset the budget. And it sounds like we can get fifty thousand as a grant. Up to fifty thousand and off another couple of thousands thrown in from the deal. But need to find out whether this, uh, this is, uh, is possible.
Isn't that okay because they'll, they'll go away with the, the track? Contract tender mission.
I'm guessing, I'm maybe trying to grant funding, you have to go to them with a specific quote and is that what we need? Yeah, you need to have. But you need to have. Sorry, when it comes to contract finder, you're in a position to make sure that you're all ready to go ahead. And Terry and I are going to work together next week. I'm actually speaking to the, um, fund provider to, I mean, she's obviously more experienced than I am in actually, um, the finance department. So they, they, ideally, we need to set a budget to, to work with. Um, obviously, I can't guarantee that we will get all of that money, but I'm sure we can grab as much as we can. Um, but it is a, a bit of a vicious circle when you're, you're in this situation with a big, um, project like this. It's something that you need to set a budget, put it in. I mean, you can put, put the budget on the contract finder and you could get nobody come in because they can't provide what we're asking within that specification. And to be able to apply for the actual grant funding through Enver, we need to have, we need to be ready to go ahead, do we? You can't just say, we'd like this money. Yeah, we have to be in position to, um, have our budget, as in what we're prepared to spend and possibly with allowing to be amount that they're going to provide and be good to go within six months.
So we need to finish proposal to put forward, basically.
Yeah.
So we've got to propose the maximum budget that we feel comfortable with.
Yeah.
That we may or may not get additional funding from this company.
That's it. Yeah, it is. And the amount that I have actually, um, added to the seventy-five thousand is really based on the equipment that people or councils have specified. I know that, um, Brian mentioned that we get a wheelchair friendly swing. So it's a case of including possibly two pieces that would include wheelchair accessible equipment within that play area. Um, obviously, if you reduce the budget, then there'll be less equipment, which is absolutely fine, but it's giving you as much information to make that decision.
Under the, sorry to that, if, if we have a wheelchair swing, do we have access to the swing or wheelchairs? No, look, what it is, you can't get access to it.
The, the area is wheelchair accessible.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, perfect. That's a good question. You're effective, it's not, not, we get a tender.
So you need to, yes, you need to give the, the, go ahead that you're willing to spend up to a hundred and five thousand. If that's what you want to do. And then obviously, then take it from that.
You've got to put it, I think, in that, let's say, a hundred and five.
No, you tell them what you want. Well, when, when you put it on the contract finder, I think you have to put the maximum budget in and see what equipment you can get for that price. Yeah, so.
That would make sense, yeah. But obviously, it's quite good. We have to propose that we would like to, um, go, go ahead and get the quotes for this.
Yeah. I'd be happy if I may. If you put a figure in, an ex support, um, a suggested tender and it comes back and they said.
Excuse me, I've been putting my hand up the last five minutes to speak.
Sorry, John, we haven't, we, we'll come back, we'll come to you just a sec, John. We, we haven't seen your hand up, but we will come back to you.
What's the point of having a hand up, if you've been not looking at it?
It's not on the screen.
Not on.
Will we, will we even set it if Michael does it now?
Yes.
Tom Adige, is that it?
We will come to you, but just a second, Michael could finish off.
Sorry, we put a figure in, um, with a beauty. But if they come back and say, we can do this, but if we get an extra five thousand, we can do that as well, are we able to resubmit?
Yes, we can. And also, if they come back in under price, then obviously it's going to be in your favour.
So we can then seek for something else?
Yes, of course.
Excellent, thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, John.
John, go there.
Thank you. Well, I, I can't believe we're talking about spending a hundred grand when we don't know what our income's going to be next year, irrespective of grants we get. And I propose, this is deferred till after, uh, the full council meeting after December, when we know what our income is going to be. That's like any family house told and is run properly, your budget for what you do. You can't say, well, we might get maybe done in next year, but we're still going to buy this and buy that. You've got to wait to see what your money is. So this should be deferred to next year.
John, I can understand a hundred percent where you're coming from, but we've already got seventy-five K budget.
Yeah, but we are supposed to be conservatives, aren't we, Tony?
Yeah, that, yeah, I agree, if I could just say that we've, at the same time, um, we've worked out a figure that we've, the pandemic so far has cost the council about twenty thousand.
It's not, actually, it's less than that now, we've got that small one.
Yeah, yeah, hang on, I've got a couple of, yeah. The actual overall figure was, was that we have suffered a loss of about twenty thousand. Rachel is, what is coming today on an email is apparently has got in the region of six and six and a half thousand.
It's me, actually.
Sorry, I'm. It's just that I saw an email and it was.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm very sorry. So, so, uh, um, finance, young lady, has secured six and a half thousand. So we're only in a deficit of about thirteen and a half at this moment in time. I agree to, with you, John, that we should possibly wait to December, but there's no harm, I feel, in getting quotes. We're not making a decision at this point, we're just getting quotes. And if we leave it any longer.
What I've heard is likely making the decision tonight.
No, the proposal is that we go ahead and get quotes. That's what the proposal will be. It's not a question of, of it is a firm project as yet. That, that will be determined at the December meeting. Can I just say something?
Well, item seven, two, point two doesn't say get quotes, it's saying design and install a new player in. Don't say get quotes to do it.
Yeah, but we haven't actually had the proposal yet, John. And the proposal will be to continue with getting quotes, not necessarily go ahead with the work. That would be from the strategic planning.
We, we need to watch how much money we're spending, we really do. And next year, if we've got all, all the money we want coming in from the, the council tax, then fair enough, let's spend it. But until we know what we're getting, let's just calm down for goodness sake and act like conservatives.
Well, that, that's what we're doing, we're just, if we, if we don't, at the moment in time, that, that particular player is gone for twenty-seven years or something like that, and it's in sadly dis, disrepair.
They've been up for twenty-seven years, another year won't hurt them, will it?
Might be.
And it's in my order, it's.
It, 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 it might if somebody has an accident because it's, you know, faulty equipment, but.
No, they won't.
But John, we'll just look at it.
It's expected, any faulty equipment is limited, so that's a weak argument, health and safety.
Well, it may be, but we're only at this moment in time looking at quotes. Otherwise, you, if, if you leave it till December and then go for quotes again, it will be ready for another six months.
The problem I have, so I didn't say something about this, is, uh, if we leave it till later, how likely are we to miss out on this, uh, on this fifty thousand, fifty thousand pounds? Because the application's got to be in by the eleventh of December for a meeting in January for a decision. On that. So would we miss out on that?
Yeah, you, you would miss out on any opportunity of fifty thousand pounds long. Um, that is something, early December, I'm just trying to see what dates to pick. I think early December the submission needs to be in, um, four, maybe in January.
Yeah. Okay.
So in other words, making the decision before we know what we're going to spend.
Yeah, it, it kind of goes like that sometimes with some of the projects.
I'm not happy about it at all.
Does the grant, is the grant predicated on, um, agreeing with, you know, a contractor?
No, we have to have a sort of, when you go on contract finder, you need a figure to put on there. I shouldn't look at individual human beings working for you, just pluck up a figure and put it on the site. It's something that you would need to agree for me to submit, um, with certain criteria, uh, certain pieces of equipment, certification, et cetera. So, um, we'd need to have that figure there to be able to get quotes come back in after that holiday, does that make sense?
Yes, could we do a halfway house then? Could we sort of put a request, based on the figures that we're talking about here, put a request in for the grant, um, with a view to um hopefully getting the grant, and then um sending it next year after we know how much money else we're com, you know, how how much more money we're becoming, that will be coming in?
The thing is, it's up until December, unfortunately, so if it's sort of submitted, we'd need to have all that in place for this uh December.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, could we not put a request in saying, these are the figures that we'd like to go in if we can get the grant? And then if the grant, obviously, we don't get the grant anyway, then that's another thing, but if we got the grant, then, you know, we would just, and then it's approved, as in the council approves that we go ahead and spend it, then we spend it after December when we know what money is coming in.
Isn't that affordability thing, though, uh not applicable, because we're spending this financial year, so we already know what we've got in terms of a preset. The affordability statement, uh would make sense if this was happening post thirty first of March, twenty twenty one, so next financial year, because then we'll understand the income for next financial year, whereas at the moment, we understand the budget and the size of money available this year, and we're trying to access grant funding to spend with this year's money. But once it goes over the boundary, it just ends up being, well, it's it's a completely different um situation.
But isn't, isn't the point that John's making that some of the money that ha, yes, is in the budget, that we have got already earmarked, um, may need, depending on what money we don't get in towards the end of the year, we might need to use that for something else? Is that not the point that John's making? Or that I thought that's that's what he was ma, that's the point he was making?
I think we usually, because initial point, you you and I'm figuring out what we've got this year.
No, I was talking, linking it to the um tax base, that was a pretty set setting process, I think.
Yeah, but that's, but that's, but that's for next year, so what I'm saying is, is that that accounts for after March, and we're trying to do a project which is in this, within this financial year boundary. So we already know the preset and the tax base for this financial year were written. And if we're thinking about, if this was a project in, say, April, April next year, we'd have to wait, because we would want, or we'd want to know those types of um those those bits of information for how much budget we've got to pay with. But because this is this side of the financial year and this financial year, we already know the preset, we know the tax base, we know, we know those answers. It's different if we're trying to say, let's mitigate, um, you know, the council have a massive spend to mitigate something related to Covid nineteen, don't want to happen next week, next month, or what have you. That's a different situation in my, in my head. But I see this as being an item that has a budget, we know the tax base, you're just making a decision whether you do it this financial year or you delay waiting till next financial year when you've kind of gone past um understanding what our income is next year as well, because we're not, we're not there.
The decision that council made uh July for council was that the project would be progressed with quotes and plans when brought back to the next full council, and so that's clear away.
If I could just say, I I've argued many times, that just because something is in the budget, don't mean to say we've gotta spend it. That's what the BBC do, things like that, if it's in the budget, they spend it. But when we're in this financial situation, Covid, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future, we don't know what is gonna be uh required of us, then we mustn't just leave this in the budget, we can't just spend it, let's carry the money forward and apply for this grant uh next year. I can't see that this grant for fifty grand is just gonna disappear and say, well, you've had it now, and you can, we can get nothing next year, I think that's scaremongering. Just leave it, just carry it forward, wait till we see what money we've got to spend, just like a normal family would, a sensible family, they don't go into debt, and that's what we should do.
Are we going into debt? I I can understand where you're coming from, John, because you don't know what South Coast issue are gonna give us as from December. But that's on the next financial year.
Yeah, in the next financial year. That's the whole point, what I'm saying, we don't know what's gonna happen next year.
But we're trying to do it, we're trying to do the project within this financial year where where we've got money allocated for it.
Yeah, but why not carry that allocated money forward to next year in case we need it for something else? Say we get another surge of Covid, all right, two decent shutdowns, we need some money. That comes then, so, oh, well, we spent it last year, sorry.
But we we had a big lock pen this year, and to date, it's cost us thirteen and a half thousand.
And no one knows what a futile's coming.
Well, yeah, I agree, nobody's got a crystal ball.
And Andy's got his hand up, and no one's ignoring him.
Is this grant actually related to Covid, or is it, John says, something that will come around again?
Okay, from mid March, we weren't eligible to apply for it. Something that I applied for in March, we were told point blank, we didn't hit the criteria. Um, now we do, only because in July, you agreed to go ahead with the project, and I was obviously bringing it back from the next council meeting, so when I spoke to the lady, I said that potentially we could get the project done within six months.
But is it something that it is a one one bite, or is it gonna come back? Is it something we can't apply for?
It change, it changes as the wind, it it, they change the criteria from each month to each month, you know, you Covid helped us on this one, she said because of Covid, it was suddenly eligible for us.
Yeah, I can understand where John's coming from, because we don't know what's gonna happen, and one thing for certain is there's gonna be an awful lot of people out of work next year that are gonna be claiming benefits. Our tax base is only gonna go in one direction, and that's down, so we are gonna be signs are familiar, which I can understand, and if there's no guarantee that we can get this uh grant next year as well, then we need to look to actually defer it and put it across.
What do you wanna say, is it? I just think.
How about you, perhaps, you've got any comments on this?
No, I'm listening to you guys, and.
You said something, positive.
Well, I can say it's a diffi.
Contribute.
It's a difficult decision, so I I see everyone's point, but I I wouldn't know, so. So maybe Odile ha has already, sorry, Del has already said this, but is there any way we could uh go ahead and then if we get the funding, we do it, if we don't get the funding, we don't do it, is that?
Yeah, that seems very sensible.
I think that that was.
That's the point I was making, wasn't it?
I I would.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
I I think that's a totally valid point.
Yeah.
You know, that if it, and the only way to see whether we can get the funding is that we've got to go ahead and find out how much it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
I might be saying that we'll we'll actually go ahead with it, uh, John, it's just that we we if if we're gonna do it at all, at some point, we need to know how much it's gonna cost.
I mean, the council are a long time, Tony, and as soon as you know you've got the funding, the council goes forward like a rocket.
But but we're making a proposal that we go and find out how much it's gonna cost. By doing that, we can then work out whether or not we can get this grant, and then from that, we can make the decision whether or not we're gonna go forward with it.
Because in respect of the grant funding, it has to be submitted by December for their meeting, their grant meeting in January. So we will know by January what our tax base is going to be, we will set, pre-set probably about the same time, we should find out whether or not we've got the grant funding.
And then we could make a decision on when to go ahead.
Yes, or whether to delay it.
So all all our proposal is, is that this moment in time, we we go out and get the quotes.
And draft up a contract, send the documentation, follow, meet the criteria, fund it.
Depending on what South Coast issue gives us in December, we'll know by January whether we got this extra amount of money and what we need for, you know, the situation with South Coast. So that's my proposal.
Yeah.
I agree with you on this one.
Is that seconded, you might call it?
So can we put that to the vote?
So it's the, it's to to agree the budget of a hundred and five thousand and draft the contract and the document to put on the contract finder website, to then get quotes in, um, to include illicit equipment, to meet the criteria of the funding provider, and and no final decision is made.
And no final decision under our heads.
Decision in the new year.
Until we know what what the financial situation is in the new year. So we've got a proposal in a second, though.
Yeah, before you go, uh, before you propose, can I come in, please?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, I think that we could rather amend the proposal, instead of agreeing on the budget, we should rather go for the quote without agreeing on budget at this stage. If we get a quote and know how much it's going to cost, then we can proceed with that. If we can afford that, then uh we will do it, if we can't, we will uh postpone it to the next budget treaty. So I'll rather change the proposal and then refresh it and take, agreeing, agreeing on the cost of a hundred and something amount, pound, I think we should tweak it a bit in order to agree on what John is saying and then also going for the quote. But if we agree on the cost now, whatever amount that we are going to get, definitely it might be within that, but we might end up utilizing this funding, should anything happen next year, we wouldn't be able to uh commit ourselves in any good shape as a council, so we should rather tweak the proposal, that's my view on that.
As far as I understand it, to go, to be able to put something on the contract finder's website, we have to have a little bit of a figure. Because if you just put to design a play area for us, potentially you it could be ten thousand, it should be two hundred thousand, so I think that's, is that right, Del?
Yeah, we need to have some ballpark figure, we can take certification, individual equipment of, if we can alter all sorts of things, but we do need to have, and I can't make that decision, I am just an implementer of your decision. Um, it would need to be a drawn up, look at contracts, but at end of document highlighting certification and a ballpark figure. When we get the quotes come back in, they might be less, they might be more, I can't, obviously, there can't be more because we've got a figure. Uh, but it gives people the opportunity to quote against that figure with the certification.
I think Tom.
Sorry, Tom, you wanna say something?
No, I can give it.
Tom, did you want to say something?
I agree, we have the final acceptance, actually.
So it was a hundred and five thousand to get the quotes and to make the final decision, once the financial position's clear in the new year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I for the grant.
And yeah, we know about the grant position, yeah.
Isn't it really an assessment of risk against what we see Covid causing? It's it's subject to Covid, subject to the grant, and we make a decision whether we go ahead, once we know how much it's gonna cost. There's no final thing to say, we're gonna go ahead with it. You know, to alleviate your fears, John, it's just that all we'll do, we'll find out how much it's gonna cost, and we have to do that procedure to find out whether we can get the grant. And we make the decision whether we go ahead, once we know what we're looking like in the new year. Okay, so I think we've got a proposal and a second, though.
Yes.
Can we have a vote on the, you can, just go ahead and find out what it's gonna cost? Um, who's in favor?
One in favour? Five, six, seven.
Seven, eight.
Nine and ten. Tom, ten, and over.
Okay. Abstention. Well, John. Thank you, John. Right, there's no more. All right, the seven point two three, um, to in in station and replacement missing bus shelter. And it was wood and the refurbishment of existing bus bus shelters. Was this the bus shelter that there was no bus going along?
Yeah, this is it. The second, the second line for that, it says, and if the redundant bus shelter on Westwood Road should be removed. Look, it's great that talk, isn't it?
No, the one on the other side of the road. Which is there, but actually.
But it's not, it's not on a bus route?
No, no, no.
So did we say, did we just leave it, or do we say we're gonna take it away?
Well, going back to, so obviously, you did agree that we would purchase a bus shelter. So then you, you need to, first we decide whether you want to put the bus shelter that you agreed to purchase to replace one of our existing ones, which could do with replacement, or whether you just want to say, no, we'll leave it for now. Um, and then also to find out if we can, if you're happy for us to take down the dumpy bus shelter, which hasn't been used for ten years.
Is there any bus, sorry, questions? Is there any bus shelters that we desperately need to replace?
I think Del might have an answer on that one.
Um, there are various bus shelters that need replacing, but I think each individual council within the ward would probably have a stronger um case on knowing which ones would be more suitable. There are a couple on um Bradley, it's not Bradley, that way, um, Bayley Court Road that are pretty old, um, and other parts of Westwood Road, they're quite aged as well. I I have no suggestion as to which one, but what it could do with being replaced, but obviously, if you want to save money, then it's an opportunity.
I think we should leave it, quite frankly.
Yeah, I agree with that, actually, there's no point, you know, unless we've got some that we can clearly identify as being absolutely dilapidated and, you know, possibly dangerous. I think we should just, in light of the discussions that we were having earlier, I think we should just um get rid of the one on uh We- Westwood Road, because there's never gonna be a bus going down there, so get rid of that, and then just defer the replacement until we're a bit more sure about our financial position.
I'll say that, sure.
Yeah.
Harry.
So um, we had a proposal by Terry to um cancel any bus shelters at the present, we've we've, so, sorry, you wanna say something there, Andy?
Actually, I remember that, so we were gonna actually renovate in some of the bus shelters, and it was a project to put some new prospect on.
Yeah, this has been a work in progress because of Covid. Prospect range has been um increased, obviously, with um workplaces, schools, so it's been really, really difficult to get hold of replacement prospect, and at the moment, we can't get hold of any that would be suitable for the bus shelters.
The ones by Bayley's Court um centre uh have been bent graffiti rather too well, I think, and perhaps as well as any to be looked at.
Can we uh get that graffiti off as there?
We do, we do get it off regularly.
Well, it's been there since I moved three years ago.
We have, we do remove as much as we can as it arrives, but yeah, and we will.
The lumber's there, hardens. The lumber's on, the hardens, they take off.
I mean, that might be some terrifying, even if it's just a question of taking out the existing plastic screen, or putting a new plastic screen rather than doing the whole shelter.
Yeah, that's what that would be saying at the moment, we can't get hold of that plastic because of all the heavy screens and everything, so.
And also, um, because I've got a messy mess to do, I took some photos of some really, really dilapidated um road signs, and a couple are actually quite dangerous on Westwood Road and Bayley's Court Road, et cetera. I was doing a walk and I thought, I'll take a picture of this, and it's uh street care that you have to raise that with, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, they're their, they're their signs, yes, yeah.
Okay, and can I, Sharon, can I just go directly to them, or do I have to go through you?
No, you can go directly to them, yeah.
Okay, will do.
Don't get anywhere, come back to me and I'll try as well.
There's a few.
Okay.
Use the report it link, Terry.
So do you say it?
Use the report it link.
Oh, okay, we'll do it, thanks.
Ah, but actually, at the moment, or it was at the beginning of the week, the report it link, when you try to, when you try to go into row to the bit where you would report signs, it takes you through to the potholes with. But I pointed that out, but I have pointed it out several times because there's a road surface reported, which is potholes. And then there's like, um, a bit for other bits of highway, but those are linked to the same potholes bit at the moment, um, but yeah.
Okay, fine, fine. Let's move, moving back to the bus shelter scenario.
So we've removed, removed the middle of one on Westwood Road and delayed replacement of existing bus shelters.
But actually, sorry, sorry Sharon, I did say that in the beginning, didn't I? But I think maybe in losing, in you are the story of the finances. It's not actually causing any issue, is it? So should we delay that removal of that as well? Because that's gonna cost more, isn't it?
Yeah, exactly.
But uh, we can, we, we, I think we can remove it ourselves after now. We removed the, um, the swimming break value, yeah.
Oh, okay. If it's not gonna cost any more money, then that, I think that's okay.
So just in case of, yeah, disassembling it, yeah.
I think leaving it there alone makes the council look stupid.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds bad.
So Terry's opposed, we might have seconded.
And if there's anything we can salvage from that existing bus shelter, maybe we can put it to better use than one of the others. You know, like.
Well, it's a good idea, yeah.
In all respect, panel, maybe.
Yeah, actually, that's fine, that might.
Yeah, if the purchase specs panels are okay with that, then we utilize them. One of the, I want to know, ones as well. What then?
So that was proposed by Terry and seconded by you.
Can we have a vote on that then? In favor?
I.
Yeah, yeah.
And you've got your hand up, right?
Franklin, yeah, he's got his hand up.
No, and Terry, yes, because she opposed, yeah. Actually, no, I'm just.
Who's John doing?
I think he, he joined on Zoom because he had to leave during the meeting, that's why he wasn't in reading.
Um, any gains?
No, do you know what?
Okay, no sense at all. So let's move in to seven point two four. In station of spare panels and other, I think you've seen probably some back and stick to council sites. Um, did you want to come back in on this one, Del?
Yes, I managed to compile quite a comprehensive, um, report on this. I'm not gonna bore you with just reading through it because it is quite, um, intricate in parts and it's not something that I would honestly say is my fault, but it's, uh, I'm gonna help getting this out. Um, the quote that you have reflects various companies. I've still got to speak to a local company that recently installed um, solar panels on a local community centre. Uh, my understanding is their prices are much cheaper and, I mean, obviously I need to give you the information that you're asking to get and this is, me presenting you the information. Uh, I'm interested in that we've, we've managed to contact some local companies who will actually attend the site in person.
So that, then we can defer that to the next meeting, yeah, carry over.
Yes.
I'm just trying to.
Andy?
Yeah, one of the things that I found interesting was obviously later on in the agenda, we're looking at replacing the roof of Bailey's Court. And one of the, uh, companies that was offering solar panels had, uh, roofing tiles that.
Roofing tiles, yeah.
I wondered whether it was worth any hope looking at that. Except for actually a roof, more than roofing tiles, we've got high sixty grand, replacing it with photovoltaic tiles.
Yeah. It does, you've got two jobs in one.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is something I did look into, but as a bespoke, um, product, it was quite expensive. But it was something that I did get a quote back in from one company, uh, but the others with COVID just all went to ground. So it's something I could look at.
Yeah, go on then. Sorry, Andy? You, you've got, you've got cut off there, Andy, what you said?
Andy said it would be worth looking at, from that, where the quote for the, the panels, the display panels was about sixty grand, and one of the quotes we've got for replacing the whole roof is about sixty grand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, Andy.
Yeah, it's, uh, worth while looking into, so we'll, we'll, Del will, we'll be on that. Um, so moving on to seven point four. The proposed amendment is standing or recorded to, to change the allocation of members on each committee.
Well, I haven't heard anything back from Council Margaret, so that would just carry over.
Okay, carry out Oliver. Eighteen eight, to receive the minutes of finance committee meeting more on the nineteenth quarters and to deal with matters for accounts or not COVID elsewhere on the agenda.
But just to receive those.
So to receive the message, you've received it. Um, eight one one is installation of, from a pickleball court, align markings at the duty centre.
The, um, so is the pickleball, um, group were going to go away and get some prices, but they haven't come back to me yet, so that would just carry over.
Carry over, yeah. Um, number nine, to receive the minutes of nine, the meeting, on twenty seventh July and the twentieth August. So you've received it?
Yeah, this is the.
Um, ten, to receive the minutes of the, the, the committee, seven nine, seventeen four. You've received it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so number eleven, updates from Scottish National Party members, relevant to practice two. Would you look at that enough, Roger?
Um, yeah, okay, um, nothing, uh, apart from last time, uh, the sketch and, uh, the traffic lights that were wounded. I have had somebody complaining about, um, a tree, uh, invading their property in, uh, Meadow Brook Road, uh, and also had, um, a letter from somebody from the Pakistani. What I need to, um, take issue with the Pakistani High Commission because, uh, his particular sect of Muslims, the Yumayyis, were being persecuted in Pakistan, do some very order, uh, I think, well, yeah, okay, thank you very much, yeah. Um, speak to Jack Frosty.
Yeah, I've got a question of being a traffic lights and we're worried this.
Yeah.
Because we're getting new traffic lights and having run about, um, break after traffic to a certain extent, which will make it easier to get out.
You and I, in any event, it's pretty unportable, anyway, because it's a month and fifty thousand, seventy thousand per second. But I've asked, uh, asked, um, the road traffic engineers, are there any cheaper alternatives that could be used to slow that traffic down, to cover that braille from a bit round about, uh, approaching the word this? And I do appreciate the problem, especially if, you know, increasing traffic in a way that I work.
So remember the tree invading property, what quote?
Meadow, Meadow Brook, Meadow, yeah.
Was, was that from?
Meadow Road, sorry, yeah.
Was that from a chap called B. Bushby?
I can't remember the name of that man.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know the person is got a cherry tree.
It's moved there, uh, conservatory. Uh, there's a problem about ownership of the tree. They'd be, the council, the council deny ownership of it.
Yeah.
The council deny there's any tree protection orders, I mean, the trees on that road. Um, and suggested they write a Gloucester, uh, place in Gloucester, um, to do this under ownership. Land registry? I think it was, yeah. Yeah.
Any comment? Anyway, uh, okay, so that's got to be, but anything from you, Franklin? Is there?
I think I have one on the D V R Y funding, which I did send to Sharon this afternoon for them to review. Hopefully we could get some money from that, uh, source as well, so.
Police, Eddie Area Y funding, yes, I passed that one to brain, so I think there might be some projects, uh, people have sourced funding, yeah.
And, uh, and on that one, uh, well, strong Franklin, is there any further progress with the widening of the cycle path by the, just down from the surgery?
Unfortunately, I haven't been given any update yet, that's why I'm unable to update on that. But we are still waiting from the world officers to update as of that. As soon as I get that, I will forward it to, uh, Sharon.
Okay, i- if there's any chance of just pushing that a bit because this, I mean, I know you've only attacked it for a short while, but that particular area's been going on for years. Um, but okay, thanks for that, very good.
You're welcome.
And, um, Keith?
Uh, thanks, Tony. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm sure other members probably share the concern of the, um, absolute lockdown that this area is suffering with road closures and phenomenal sums of money that street care and WEC are just sort of chucking about at the moment. And before they even finish jobs, they announce that there's gonna be further traffic lights going in. Uh, we've suffered all the problems on Brookway and Orpheus and Grayton Avenue. All badly signposted, traffic all going down to the junction and then finding that the road is still closed and having to trundle back up. This is costing a lot of money to people's time, their fuel, everything else, going all the way around the houses. And, you know, are we actually benefiting from any of this? We're alienating all the public. And, you know, people are getting absolutely incensed. And I know I am as well. And I'm sure Roger, you've said the same, haven't you?
Absolutely. And, uh, I don't know if you saw my comments to ten P about inclusion of, I bragged about in, uh, in one of our election, uh, my past shows. I said, well, don't go white boy, uh, it's a little bit bad, basically, and, uh, he came back, well, he says, you're not actually, um, advocating. He was, um, noting, you know, I said, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, I stood.
I jogged in one.
I stood recently at the narrowings that have been put in at the railway arch at Parkway with Tim Bolts and our researcher, and we watched numerous lines of cars going through there on red lights. And not only that, these electric scooters now as well, which is a big problem. I was at Willowbrook and nearly got hit on my feet off by one of those. You can't even hear them. And here we are now, WEC are there, signing up to some agreement whereby, you know, we're gonna be allowing these things, you know, to be used. Now, the police are, you know, they're, they're all over the place on this. They don't even know what the law is on it. But they're set, they interviewed a guy to do with the electric scooters on the, on the radio this morning. And he retains it to tell all these people that, you know, they can't officially use them on the highway. But we've got kids going around this area and they're, they're just everywhere. Correct me if I'm wrong, a pedestrian footpath should be more pedestrian.
Yeah.
This doesn't mean scooters, number of, uh, adult, active, are ordinary pedal bikes, you see them, April, it's quite ridiculous.
Yeah.
And there's cycle paths, yeah, I agree.
I, I understand as well, Tony, there was an accident at the Willowbrook involving one of these electric scooters. And the wind screens of the vehicles were damaged.
Yeah, it was also, about a month ago, there was a shooting as well, a bit creepy, wasn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, at least ended about five times in one day.
It's not a problem that, uh, at this level, it's one wonders if they have an actual damage car, who pays the insurance?
Yeah.
Anyway, then I think they finished that, that bit of tarmac and you've got done and, um, uh, down by Grayton Avenue there.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a request coming, I don't know if you agree with this. Uh, there's a request coming from a resident called Chris Lees. And he's not wanting to see any Arctic's or delivery lorries using Orpheus and Brookway. He wants them all to go round the Bradley Stoke Way to the Willowbrook, Aldi, or the rest of it, and avoid using that stretch of road.
Well, I mean, going back twenty years when I was on Barnet, um, I had a village in Bournemouth. We had to get all heavy vehicles and, and, uh, by installation of weight distribution. I don't know, that's, uh, by South Dots. It needs to be, police, post office, whatever.
Well, uh, well, thanks for your report, Keith.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, right, uh, uh, John's gone, so.
That goes so exciting. Another one, chat, another one on Gixby, page eight. Uh, we, who Chris made way out at play from the late evening on Saturday, the twenty fourth of July. Early hours of Saturday, seventh November, so hopefully this is also caused more traffic, so.
Yeah, that's come through today.
Excuse me, sorry.
There, there's one other one, which is, uh, our patchway north Bradley Stoke. The Bosnian School tra- um, I can't really see what they're doing. They've seen two, I've seen the crossing, but I think.
They've got a raid, I'm following that, I think.
Is that what it is?
I think it is. Is that not mine?
But I, I can't understand what they're doing on it. I mean, I've been there for it, for it. Um, anyway, there we go. Okay, come out the watch.
Didn't you see all the information on that sometime last year?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, Keith, you, you, you need to mute yourself again, please.
Sorry?
You need to mute yourself again, please.
Oh, right, I see.
Thank you, Keith. Um, so it was called a feedback. Um, so right, we're, 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 twelve, twelve, okay, financial matters. Um, let's go with the twenty twenty one internal audit.
So you have that information in your addenda pack that won't go through. Hopefully councillors have read it. So the two things you need to do is to agree the scope of the internal audit, which has been put together by South Dots Internal Audit Services. And then to appoint two councillors to carry out the annual government inspection in February twenty twenty one.
I'm very happy to propose it. I'm very happy to do it again.
I would say.
Yeah.
So do you want the person to, 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 to propose that one?
Well, seconded.
Well, just seconded it, the answers to you.
Did, did, do you wanna just say that out loud? Because I don't think everyone heard what you said.
So I just, I just proposed that we accept the scope of the internal audit because nothing's fundamentally changed, has it? So it's remained the same. And then for the next point, when we take another vote, I'm happy to propose myself again or, or, um, do it with another councillor.
Andy, what is that? Andy, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that it might be most of fab, but I know most of us have all been in and done you all of it. It might be interesting after doing, you know.
Would you like to be involved in that, Fab?
Actually, yeah, I do not have a financial background, so Andy, I don't know.
He doesn't either.
It's not that odorous, it's just to, uh.
Yeah, I, I think bank reconciliation scared me off.
Yeah, it's, um, it's not that odorous, uh, Fab, would you like to have a crack at that?
You don't like it, do you?
Oh, just up to you.
Yeah, I, I, I'll pass this time, but thanks anyway, Andy, yeah.
So Patrick, could you just give the scope a little bit?
Yeah, there's, yeah, two point one we're voting on, um, Ben's proposed with, and, uh, what second?
Second.
Sorry, here, second. So there was a favor for the.
So this is to accept the scope of the internal audit?
The scope of the audit. I've got quite a few numbers.
Eric?
Yeah, okay, favor.
That was your numbers, thank you.
Um, right, and then the next one was twelve point one one, which was to appoint two councillors for the annual governance inspection in February. Um, um, well, Andy, I'd better like to continue with it. Anybody else wanna do it? If not, I would, look now, if nobody else wants to do it. Who wants to? Who want to do it?
Why did you?
It's me then. Ben and myself. I, I did, I did do it, um, last year before. Um, okay, so those in favor?
So we go.
So I would propose myself. Something else proposed me then?
I'll propose to Jim.
And Ben as well, so you'll propose to me.
And Ben yourself, I was, yeah.
And second?
They're both a level.
Franklin's second there. Unless he's got his hand up. Do you know his speech? Franklin's.
No, it's okay.
Oh, yes, second there. Well done. Thank you, Franklin. So those in favor?
I am.
Oh.
You can write yourself a book.
Okay.
It's nice.
That's you now, I'm asked.
Well, I took his money for Christmas, thank you.
Right, okay, that's all the one. Um, right, 12.2, request from the boys' hours after school for holiday plans for temporary rent reduction. We did this at finance, didn't we?
Right, well, if you remember, we had a request, uh, finance for Abacus Priestall, who asked for a rent reduction. So we've now had, um, one coming from Wise House Park or Stokula. Um, so you have the paperwork in your agenda pack. Um, Terry can talk through, can you say about the, the financial information, you? Yeah.
And so looking for rent reduction.
You did agree to that.
That's, yeah. Let me tell you what happened. The pay for it, we haven't yet set this. They're all different.
Well, yeah, the, the group's full day rate, those two pounds, so could be, if the deduction would be sixteen pounds a day, the income set for the period September into November, uh, three months would be six hundred and seventy-two pounds. So we're also three, three hundred and thirty-six pounds. Um, and there, yeah, so it's different from the four period, we have to sort of buy some price on the eight pounds.
Terry, well, sorry, what did we do to the other one?
We did it. We just did it for September.
Right, the decision we made for Abacus was to give them one month.
Yeah.
And that's it. Fifty percent reduction for one month and then nothing further as it could rule gesture.
Then I think we should do the same.
And this is two items, so we've now got the main article.
Yeah, of course, there are three agenda items, there are three separate.
Have you had a name that enforced that paper?
No, it's not.
And we've just do it for September.
Yeah, yeah, we, we have enforced that because we, we, Wise House and Little Lakeport, we will both be in August for September. Whereas Baby Ballet, if you decide when we get to that agenda item for Baby Ballet, then you will need to do it for a month. So I mean, because they have to check for the others, yeah.
Okay. So, um, we need to propose, then we, sorry, then.
I was just going to say, in light of the fact we've now got three subsequent requests for rent reduction for September, should we be thinking about in terms of like every community group that comes to us or September should be potentially ordered the reduction, say, or whatever we've set as a precedent?
There are, there, there is, I, I would say no. I would say you actually, if the groups come, because obviously, because the rule of six has now come in, that has deterred some of the groups from coming back. I think it needs to be, personally think it needs to be done on an individual basis and rather than have a generic thing that everybody gets fifty percent off. I think that they need to put their report together, um. Uh, yeah, so we like the likes of, the likes of Frankie, so senior friends and Sol and Sodes and Towns, all these builders, W100, they're anticipating coming back until January anyway now.
So they wait for the payment, right?
Yeah, so they're not doing anything.
If it might be worse, you're putting an informed agreement that the council's policy so far has been cropped one night's half price. We might just, um, shut them their interest.
And in my worries, it just ends up being, um, you don't, as their community groups, you don't want them to lose out on what others did before. So, yeah, I really do agree with what Mike's saying.
Well, I think perhaps if councillors just minded that, that it would communities. Well, I've seen it, it's a blessing, something.
Who was that?
Who was that?
Who was that speaking?
That was this new person who's just arrived and I've just moved.
You're just new shares.
That's why I just.
Chair, can I just say, I'm gonna have to drop, I'm afraid. Is that okay?
Yeah, well, no, yeah, sure. Thanks, thanks for your participation in the talk. Thank you, Terry.
No problem. Thanks a lot. Take care.
Yeah.
You're on bye.
I, uh, because I'm not necess- I'm not necessarily, I mean, I was quite worried when we did the previous one, this, this, that this would create this. Um, but then it's a case of just having a very fair.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I genuinely think that, you know, as, as and when the groups start to come back, if they ask us, then we can, we'll do that. Because, you know, as councillors have pointed out before, that, that we, yeah, you know, we're a lot to charity, we are dealing with public money. So rather than having a generic thing, which anyone could say, oh, yeah.
I know, I get that they say that. I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, like, what kind of challenges it needs to come to anyway?
The thing is, Ben, they're probably getting their fees in anyway, because they know you're all doing everything's on Zoom.
Yeah.
Which my daughter, my granddaughter is sort of doing.
No, I, I, no, I still, I fully appreciate, I'm just kind of wondering, what's the impact of?
I mean, I think the answer to Ben's query is, you could be no challenge if we're going to be trying individually.
Yeah, well, it comes in, yeah, it's telling.
But we can give the way.
Is that right?
Yes.
Andy, yeah. Thanks, Mike. Andy, you wanted to say something?
I would agree with what Ben's saying. I mean, a lot of the things we are, as we charity, we've actually come across, is quite a lot of the small organisations have actually followed it due to Covid. So I think if we've got something where we can review it for each and every group that comes by, a lot of groups, I think may not come back at all.
Yeah, yeah, we wait, wait until the bill comes in from each individual group.
Yeah, totally agree.
Yeah. Rather than cart badge across the board.
I still think, I still think to inform that we don't need to.
I don't think we should.
Well.
Other ones.
No, absolutely, no, personally on that.
But see, what type of challenges it needs to come to, mate? Like, you've got, um, I know, can you, should you take a, should you ask?
The minutes are out in the public domain, so it's not like the information's hidden away. Everything is detailed, people can see it.
Yeah, no challenges, I think.
No, 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 we, they, they want to look at the minutes, but they're actually, I'd like to, uh, get, get the discount for our group when we start back.
We just can't discount willy-nilly to everybody that uses this facility.
No, 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 I appreciate that. And I don't, I don't necessarily want to do that because I didn't want to give the initial reduction first. It's a fear of coming to a subsequent council meeting, having three more requests for rent reductions. Um, I'm just saying, I'm just wondering.
I think that these are the ones that we were expecting to come in.
My thoughts don't go into any form of criticism for giving it its life.
Risk of a challenge is if we give groups A, B and C a discount and groups D and F we don't?
Yeah, yes, exactly, but we normally do that.
Formally.
Yeah.
We decide amongst ourselves that one month is what we're going to give. But at least establishes amongst ourselves, if not outside it, the benchmarks which we have.
Yeah. So let's, um, let's try and move on with this and to say that, um, we will give a rent reduction to these people that have applied and it's only one month, as per the previous one that we agreed.
So fifty percent reduction for one month as a goodwill gesture. And that's a one-off, yeah.
Yeah, for the people that apply.
Yeah.
So that's the proposal. Do we have the second?
Yeah.
So are you doing this for all three of the groups?
Yeah, yeah, same, all three. Same, do you measure it? Yeah, twelve, two, three, four together, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's Terry, I'm in second of my row. So that's for all three of the groups on the agenda. So that's Wise House, Baby Ballet and Little Lakeport.
So can we have a vote on that then?
Sorry, just one second. Uh, I think the ballet was only asking for twenty-five percent. Is that clear to everybody?
Well, they were, they were asking for twenty-five percent for the, um, as long as the, uh, Covid arrows on.
Now, okay. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, uh, for, so, uh, let's have the vote on, we, we propose in seven, one, two, three, four. Uh, in favor, Andy, uh, Franklin in favor. Terry's gone. Oh, Fab's in favor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm very much answered.
Right then. So two, next one is twelve, five, to approve the bills and for credit payments.
And you have that in your agenda pack?
Yeah. Well, yeah, the notice on the, uh, the defence, you can see.
That's, uh, one two seven nine eight, the following, um, it's the end of the year. Two five seven nine eight, thirty.
Now, that, 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 so the, the one, so the two one seven six eighty-eight one is all sites ground maintenance, February twentieth, which was a missing invoice. And then the next one, the maintenance of probably straight around about twenty, February twenty, missing invoices for two hundred and nine pounds.
I can't, we never received.
I'll be selling it soon. I'm not sure this is the right time to raise it, I don't think, but shut up. Uh, is there any progress we've made on replacing that little plastered goat man sheep?
That will be coming, that's less used and I will be getting some prices for that one, yes. That's less used in October, yes. I do have that in my mind. Every time I drive around the road of annual, I think I must get some prices for that. Yes, yeah. Yeah, because the February one, for some reason, I'm going to misplace sending us the invoice and then the August one is the up-to-date one. So there's, there's a couple for listing from a while ago. Now, did you hear that one?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, now, what I do, what I do, when I cut the grass, I look at the trim, the edges of the lawn, it leave, leave it. And we do that.
We go on a Thomas to play, you know, that, uh, that was so great and that, no, it was, uh, you know, two, uh, I don't know.
That's generally.
That's a good wildlife, uh, conservation there, isn't it? We don't want, we don't want any bit, you know, it's absolutely pristine mode, do it.
If you build ramp, it's packing all over the estate. But it's the edges, they just don't seem to do the edges. They do the, the main bit with the long one, but they don't go ramp with a straight ramp.
Uh-huh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
We will chase them off in that one.
Um, so that's my point for that. So I'm happy with the, um, bills. Can I have a proposal for the bills? There, oh, Franklin's proposed, you have a second there? Hey, the bills, Ben, those in favor? Very good. Okay.
Yeah, I can actually, yeah.
You know, we, I need to offer a case. Still with the Miss Salinas matters, the, uh, on 13, 30, we're on cancellation in twenty, twenty four, which is staying in the Covid pandemic and setting a date for twenty twenty one.
So you have this in your agenda pack, so obviously, there's no way, unfortunately, this year's firework display is going to go, going to be able to go ahead. Especially the rules as well as coming. Um, so we have spoken to the company who will contract to provide this year's fireworks. And we can transfer the deposit which is already paid, one thousand and forty-five pounds and seventy-five p to twenty twenty one. So it is suggested that as a one-off, the balance of the cost of the actual fireworks, which is three thousand one hundred and forty-six pounds and twenty-five p, be, be donated to the mayor's charity for this year, which would be approximately a similar amount to that usually collected by the firework displaying budget collectors for the mayor's charity.
We agree that, don't we?
Sorry?
We agree.
Well, no, I, I mentioned it strategically and they will be coming up tonight. Um, and then you will also need to set the date for twenty twenty one display so that we can transfer the deposit across. So the two bits suggested by the firework company are the 31st of October.
Too early.
Or the 7th of November.
Too late.
On research, Remember it Sunday, because I did think that would actually be Remember it Sunday. But I found out a bit the information which I didn't know, that Remember it Sunday is always the second Sunday in November.
Always.
Fourteen twenty twenty one will be the fourteenth of November. So the seventh of November would be the ideal number, I think, really.
It's near, isn't it?
Two days after Bob, Bob did.
Yeah.
And.
Um, Andy, would you like to say something then?
I make it the seventh.
Margaret.
Yeah, seven.
Yeah.
Andy, do you want to say something?
Mayor's charity is.
Yeah.
Um. What's the current balance on the mayor's charity?
Not a lot.
Nothing?
Hardly anything, because obviously it, it gets the income from the community festival and fireworks, so it got nothing.
Cancel the, the, the fireworks.
Yeah.
Oh, nothing.
We would be generating some income from the sand and trail, but, yeah, so we could at least put the.
I, no, 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 I, I massively hugely agree with doing this because, I mean, we've just had a big discussion about charities going under. I think that our mayor gets a few charities to support local or national, whatever they want to do each year is a huge part of this. I'm just wondering, actually, is there scope to have a discussion later on in the year about maybe donating more to the mayor's charity? I think it's going to be significantly lower than all of the years.
I think potentially next March would be the time to, if you wanted to put some more money into that.
I think that we really must to consider or have some, like, in the next, if you're in March or April.
Yeah.
Hello, yeah, one, one thing. Hello?
Hello. Yeah, we're listening.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I agree with what, uh, but, but one of the things which I have a queries, last year, when we had the August back holiday thing that's happened over there, the rent from there usually comes to the mayor's charity. But you are the same guy who said you should come to the council. Then why, why was that? I would register that, I would be made to be, one of the, why, why it was.
Oh, um, the mayor's, that, that charity thing, though, the, the mayor's charity things, I've always advocated that the, that we, the mayor's charity receives donation.
Yeah, but why should, uh, at that time, it was deferred? So it is only two double standards, that's all. I, I agree with what you have said, I also support these kind of things, but it's a double standard. When I was mayor, then you don't want, even the one that comes to the mayor's charity, as you have lot. Uh, right now, we are taking funds from the council and you get, so that's like the two standards, okay? Whatever it may be, I want to register that and I'm minuted, why it was, and it's a query, okay? Because I, I said I'm open for that because it's not only for the mayors, for the charity. So I was, I haven't even objected to that at that time, but, uh, I don't like that was.
I was having to, what, repeating, I was actually repeating what happened, Tom.
Hello?
I said I have to check what was minuted in previous council meetings there because I have got no recollection of wanting to withhold mayor charity funds.
Yeah, Tom, that's something, Tom, Tom, it's like this, every single event this year, because of Covid, has been cancelled.
No, 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 but, but, Tommy, listen, listen.
No, no, you just, you go.
I know all those things, okay? Don't want directly giving him from that. I just want to know why was that, okay? That I support what we are doing, okay? We have to give, support the charities. But two different things, uh, to, to, two different people, it's actually, it is, the standards are different. Because usually, all these years, the money from the, um, that one, the bank holiday, like, even thousand money, it was going to the mayor's charity. But last year only, it was withdrawn and said it should be to the council. And I hadn't even objected to that, because I think the only person who objected to that, uh, said, yeah, against was the, uh, John Ash, okay? He said it should be to the mayor's charity, but I said, it's fine, what do I agree? He said it should be to the Mayor's Charity, but I said, it's fine, whatever you mean. Okay, I want to register that.
It's funny, why are we talking about it? And I don't, I don't, that's fair, I have to go back and look at council minutes and record actually, I thought, you're, that's, that's, that's quite an accusation, Tom.
I know, because, I know, it's a fact, it's not necessarily, it's a fact, love, uh, it's, 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 isn't it?
If it's fact, I will go back in the previous minutes, and I would want to.
Yeah, otherwise Sharon can clearly arrive on it, as a proper officer, she, if she wants to say something, yeah, I would like to listen to it.
Not more just two thousand and nineteen.
Well, she doesn't need to say anything on this particular matter, you've admitted yourself in this meeting, it was fine, so let's move on.
It wasn't eight last year anyway, or two more.
It was two thousand and nineteen, and Tom's referring to the fact that, I must admit, there was quite a big council discussion in the past. The, um, uh, the income from Jimmy Crols Fair went to Mayor's Charities, but in two thousand and nineteen, I think it was, was it or even eighteen, one of the years, the money actually went, came back to the town council as income, as opposed to being given to the Mayor's Charity, so.
It's irrelevant this year, because it's all been cancelled, so let's move on. Um, right, next.
Right, so.
Relevant standards, someone look.
We need a proposal, a second, uh, to give the three, one, four, six, two, five to the Mayor's Charity, transfer the deposit to next year, set date for next year.
So we heard the proposal, can we have somebody to?
I'll second that.
Propose it, and somebody to perhaps second it.
And Michael proposed.
Um.
Here's a second.
Andy's got his hand up.
I think Keith.
Or Keith, one of the two.
Yeah.
So those, those, um, those in favour? I'm going to abstain, yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six in favour.
Six in favour, those against?
I'll abstain.
One.
And those abstaining is Tom, and I obviously have to abstain.
I'm abstaining too.
So three abstaining, thank you very much.
I'm abstaining, so that's been carried, right, next.
You really, you were partly in favour of it.
I am in favour, I'm not having an accusation like that, that's.
Oh, right.
Check it out and then report it to standards. Um, right, clearly, um, da, 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 right, thirteen point two, uh, recommendations for the twenty twenty strategic planning meeting, youth funding budgets clarity and transparency.
Right, so you have the, uh, information from the, um, strategic planning meeting in your agenda pack, so the first one is the youth funding budgets clarity and transparency. So the recommendation at strategic planning was that councils recommend to all council that B S T C set up a completely separate youth act as an attachment to the five-year forward plan, to give a clearer picture and easier reference points to use income and expenditure budgets.
Okay, good.
To your proposal, a second, I'm ready. Michael, I'm ready. Okay, vote on that, Tony.
Yep. Those in favour, please, uh, you, anonymous, unless, Tom. So he's gone again.
Yeah, so that's you, anonymous, thank you.
Yeah, right, thank you, Tom. Um, so the thirteen point two-two is the redevelopment of the Brookway Activity Centre main building.
Okay, so discussion took place on the possibility of various redevelopment ideas to increase the usage at Brookway Activity Centre, which could potentially include the provision of a community cafe, new kitchen, brick-built storage solution which could be utilised by the town council and scouts. So the recommendation for our strategic planning is that B S T C explores the redevelopment possibilities of the main Brookway Activity Centre building.
I think we need to add, uh, and to look at the possibilities of a, of a loan from, uh.
Absolutely.
I'm at work, I'm at work, no, I'm at work, so, thank you, I'll be.
Which, uh, gallows as in, is, has in hand.
And so draw a possibility of, of, yeah.
Yeah, I'm speaking through any measures, I suppose like that. Um, so those in favour?
We need a proposal, a second.
Oh, sorry.
Roger, Roger, Roger.
Yeah, I can.
Andy.
Those in favour?
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, those in favour?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Well, good, and then the uh, thirteen point two-three is the current Brandy St Pete's Council Committee Meeting Date.
So there was a discussion which took place on the current committee meeting dates, um, whether, so the, the recommendation was that the S T C looks at streamlining the committee meeting dates.
So they're all on Monday, other than Monday the last day.
Well, no, of course, I guess that, that potentially would move leisure use amenities to, uh, so that there aren't two meetings in one week. So perhaps, I don't know, I mean, so the councils, this, this is just a recommendation, you might decide that you don't want to change it, but you're happy with it as it is, or.
Quite exploring recommendations, that's what it's about.
Yeah.
So we're exploring that, so we need to say we're exploring that?
Well, that's what the recommendation is, to explore it, so that.
Can we explore it this evening?
No, not really, because you, you need to.
Do you need to do a search?
It's just a recommendation, so, yeah, you need to sort of, uh, without council's availability for other meetings, that's the thing.
Personally, I would be very much in favour of not having two meetings in the same week.
Yeah.
Why haven't you?
Yeah, I agree with Michael.
Agent, to look at it, in sweat, not making a decision, but just in sweat.
Well, you need to make a decision in November, obviously, because you need to set the meeting dates for next year in November.
I guess, will, will cancel?
November, yeah.
One, one thing that I would recommend is that when we have the planning meetings, uh, sometimes the planning meeting gets put in on the back of finance and things like this, if we can avoid doing that.
I mean, the only reason that we move meetings around generally is because we don't clash with South Gloucester Council, and their meeting is on Wednesday evening, so then ones that, that, where, as you say, where you have like finance and funding in one night, um, that's normally when you have to move it, either for Christmas is the main one, obviously, nobody wants me between Christmas and New Year, um, and also then we change them sometimes if South Gloucester have committing.
Well, you.
Unless we could, sorry, Michael.
If we're going to have to work in the South Gloucestershire, we'll meet on Wednesdays, might as well have considered having all our meetings on a Tuesday.
But that impacts on quite a lot of other parish and, uh.
Yeah, it does.
All peace meetings with, so this is Tuesdays, I think.
They are.
Yeah, so, and, and he's on another tag, well, so that's why they're always on Wednesday.
Yeah, but there's one, one Tuesday in a month, that should be possible with good will, to work around that problem.
Well, also Sharon, we've got to consider things like, I know we don't have a lot of them, but the community engagement forum meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of other stuff which goes on, which is why they've always been on Wednesday.
Yeah.
Hmm.
So, um, also on Mondays now, we, we're often having conservative group meetings, which are South Gloucester meetings every two weeks on a Monday, which, uh, can slightly pinch on, on, uh, leisure, you can move this, but it needs a rush, but, uh.
I would, I would, I would go swapping to any other day apart from Wednesday, to be honest, but perhaps look at moving.
What's wrong with Thursday?
Okay.
That seems to be the only other day there. Like, seven boring days a day every week.
But it's, but it's more about having the two, rather than, uh, which evening the meeting is, it's more about having two meetings in one week, isn't it? So potentially, you could look at perhaps moving leisure use to the first Wednesday of the month, rather than.
I sometimes I've had three or four in a week.
Yeah.
And that.
You won't beat that, don't we, Kate?
Yes, we do, Roger.
Yeah.
I got him four, I got him four, Paul, four days a week sometimes.
Yeah.
Is it not change for changes sake, it's kind of evolved to the stage where it does actually work? Yeah, it does, yeah. Things are right, it's going to clash with other things. We. There, there'll always be something that'll clash, but, you, you know, we've got the ability to send apologies, haven't we? We've all kind of arranged ourselves and our commitments around existing dates and days anyway, so then you've got to go back and start changing other things, it, it just doesn't necessarily make sense to change it, really.
Yeah.
I know that this, that we did have, I mean, it's been on the Wednesday, I've been here nearly eleven years, they've always been on the Wednesday, I guess they probably were before that time, and when we were trying to find an evening to have leisure use and amenities, it was very difficult, that's why it ended up on the Monday, same week, uh, with the finance.
And, and also on some occasions, I mean, you know, depending on whether or not we're going to see a vast influx of, uh, planning applications, we could do it by round robin.
Well, no, you can't do planning applications by round robin, that's not suitable. I'd get up to actually, uh, a discussion, you can't do it by, in that.
I, I don't think the, uh, discussion is necessary about changing the day, I think it's just a question of two meetings in the one week.
Yeah.
Because as you say, we've all, we've kept these dates for, 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 for many years, and it, it tends to, uh, it's just that, I can see obviously that, that, the, the, the one week, the finance and you, it's a, it's a quite big meeting. Different, it'd be different if it was planning.
I think on the full council, years and years and years ago, when we gone past twelve o'clock, nine.
Yeah.
Yeah, four hours, four hours, yeah, yeah, these, today, the meeting's super, a lot easier, I don't know.
So what do you think of this one, I'm sure, what have you thought, Joe?
I personally would suggest that, uh, where you've got the two meetings in the one week, you change, for example, you've got youth and leisure and finance, they're both too heavy meeting, if you're going to have two in one week, put planning in exchange for one of those two, because planning's quite a short one.
Hmm, yeah.
It's how I suppose it is as well.
But it can be long, you know, it depends.
Yeah, it does depend on them, but it, it's not, it's not normally as long as the line management, as you do, did they?
In general, they're not generally.
So perhaps, yeah, perhaps you could consider to have finance on the fourth, and the month, and the planning to the third, and keep that in the week, would that be enough?
That, that way not to put ahead a deal with it, if you're going to have the two in the one week? That's my suggestion.
Well, it's only leisure use and meeting days and finance, you know, you're keeping it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what, what percentage of, of, too, too lot of heavy things?
Yeah, but there's not saying quite in town on all, on all people, are there?
No, no, all, all councils, all.
I'm only on one, John's on one, because South Gloucester, we've got other things to do, um, so there are people just want one. Ben likes to go on all the weeks, you know that, he likes to go.
Yeah, well, I can't elect to do all, all, all of them, but, um, so that's why it was my suggestion, it's just because planning is the end of it, not good.
Yeah, I know, because, because timescales, what we're getting, forgetting in the, your responses. There's a second time scale.
I agree, I am going in, yeah. So have we got any proposals?
Uh, neither do I.
Yeah, second says is. I, I have a feeling we did, had this discussion once before, we came to the exact same conclusion.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did, yeah, absolutely, Andy, it's a bit tough, we did, but, I think, that's what they do.
So.
If it ain't broke, don't try and fix. Yeah, I, I, I propose that, I'll second that, if that's a proposal.
So what, what propose, I think, seconded, to keep, they can say, keep, say, well, yeah.
Shall we go on that then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those in favour, to keep it in, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's one, two, three, four, five, six. And against, one.
That's one again, the rest, I think.
I'm not quite sure what Tom's doing.
Smiling.
Okay, thank you very much, council, on that one.
You don't know anything, that's the problem.
Thank you, Tom. Right, um, uh, confirm the dates are, are this, on our agenda pack.
Yeah.
So thank you very much for your attendance.
Thank you, Tony, thank you all.